Good morning, everyone. My name is Mirta Basara and I am a city council representative, representative, representative of war two. I would like to call the ad hoc committee of the city council to order. First of all, thank you, everyone, for being here. I would like to recognize that all council members, with the exception of Anderson and has will be in attendance. I also want to welcome our mayor, Mayor Engen. Commissioners Vero, Slotnik, and Strohmeyer will be participating. University President Seth Bodnar is in attendance and panelist from a team that we have put together for today. For the public, if you will like to send us your comments and you cannot participate today, please know that you can email City Council with your thoughts and comments. You can email council@ci.mizzoula.m t.us. You can also leave us a voicemail. You can call 406-552-6012. I would like to make some brief remarks to to get us going here. My family immigrated to this country more than 25 years ago. Like most immigrants, my parents came here for better opportunities, better education, and a better life for their two daughters. They chose this country for the many qualities that make it unique in the world and for some core values that align well with my family's. Chief among them, tolerance, acceptance, and respect. Now, those values seem clouded these days under a thick veil of racism, particularly in light of the most recent events. But this here today, all of us open to dialogue, wanting to learn more from one another, willing to do the work to lift that veil of racism, to find ways to change and make Missoula a more inclusive community assures me that my parents chose right, that those values will come to hold true in the future. And I want to thank all of you for being willing to do the work to lift that veil. I also want to thank our city council president, Brian von Losberg. Thank you, Brian, for all the efforts to get us here. And with that, I'll pass it on to you.
Thanks very much, Mirta. And again, welcome to everybody, welcome to the public and welcome to the group that will be presenting today. Couple brief comments about sort of structure and background. When I constituted this ad hoc committee, I initially characterized it as listening sessions. And I wanted to acknowledge that I received some understandable and constructive criticism about that, particularly around sort of the passive nature of listening, as important as it is. And I just wanted to acknowledge that and and mention that I take it to heart. Council takes it to heart. I think it's really important. And as I've said on many occasions, there are sort of three constituent parts of a process that I think about with the public and it's it's the listening. It's demonstrating that you've heard people and then it's taking action that honors that input. So you're gonna hear us, I think, shift on what we call the committee. And we've referenced it as the Ad Hoc Committee on Systemic Racism and Public Safety. And I just wanted to comment on that. After the committee of the whole meeting a couple of weeks ago, I reached out to Spider McKnight from Six Pony Hitch. I reached out to Spider because of her commitment to the community, her leadership in the community, and more recently, the work she did around public engagement with the downtown master plan update. And Spider has been working with several members in the community around a proposal that we're going to hear about shortly. And I just wanted to thank her and all the people on that team for their work and and for being here. So I, in terms of structure and a little bit of format, we're going to hand it off to the team here for their proposal and hear about that. Grateful for the interest from President Bodnar and the mayor and the county commissioners. They're not going to be able to join us for the whole meeting. So we'll do some brief Q and A with those folks while while we have them after the presentation. And then the bulk of the meeting will be open to public comment. And just want to mention that there is some information in the chat about queuing up for that. There's a script in there about submitting public comments, questions, or your interest in speaking. We'll handle that similarly to what we do in meetings. People will queue up in the chat and, you know, we'd ask people to keep their comments to three minutes or less, more or less, and try to to hear from as many people as we can. I guess in closing, I just want to say Brenda Solozano from the Headwaters Foundation in the discussion I was on some days ago, mentioned the importance of participating in this with patience, trust, and humility. And that really resonated with me and I wanted to explicitly commit, certainly myself. And I think it's an approach that we're all taking as we go through this. So patience, trust, and humility, good, good guiding principles. And with that, I'd like to hand it over to Spider McKnight from Six Pony Hitch to introduce the team.
Thank you, Brian, and thank all of you. We're really excited to present this proposal and we're really mostly excited that you're all taking this so seriously and are so committed to making real change in Missoula. So thank you for your leadership. I'm really excited to introduce our team. We are calling this project Learn Missoula. It stands for Listening Engagement Action Reflection Network. And the members, if you guys would just wave when I say your name, so people know who you are. We have Alena Oldperson. She's the program coordinator at the College of Health and Health Professions and Biomedical Sciences at the University of Montana. And she's also Missoula County Public School Board on Board of Trustees. We have Jamar Galbraith. He's the Associate Director of Program Innovation at Empower Montana. We have Dr. Laurel C. Warner. She's the program coordinator and the campus director for Walla Walla University, the MSW program on the Missoula campus. Alex Kim, he's the racial justice engagement specialist at Empower Montana and the founder and facilitator of BIPOC Outside. We have Ka'aw Ahina. He's the president of the University of Montana Pacific Islanders Club, Diverseu Student Coordinator. He's on the Executive Board of Utopia Montana and he's on the U of M Diversity Advisory Council. And finally, we have Brad Hall, who's the tribal outreach specialist at the University of Montana. This is a really great team and I'm going to hand it over to Alex Kim, who's going to begin our proposal. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alex Kim. My pronouns are he, him, his. Thank you for your time. And I just want to start this meeting by asking everyone in this conversation to observe who is in this meeting, who in this meeting, who this meeting is intended for, and who in this meeting is being paid and holds power and privilege to make changes in our community. This group has been called together to address concerns. The Missoula City Council have asked for a structured plan of engagement with the Missoula BIPOC community. BIPOC meaning Black Indigenous People of Color in this community surrounding systemic racism in Missoula and Missoula County with a particular emphasis on public safety, including policing, vigilantism in our community. The city council has engaged a professional communications firm who has created a BIPOC team of collaborators, co-creators to do this work. This BIPOC team is here with you today, utilizing our personal time, stepping away from our jobs and unpaid to this moment. At the end of the day, it is you all's job to make these decisions. But these decisions are to be facilitated and helped by the voices of Black Indigenous people in this community. And so if it is off the work, emotions, and experiences of Black Indigenous people in this community, then those voices helping you to do your jobs need to be compensated just as you all are being today. So if we want to see change, then equity in all forms must be practiced in moving forward. And so now I would like to transition over to one of our collaborators here, Ka'aw. And I'll let Ka'aw take that from here.
Aloha mai kau koe. Am I heard by everybody? Yeah, great. My name is Ka'aw Moana Ahina and I am from the beautiful islands of Hawaii, now residing here in Missoula, Montana, where I call this my home for the last three and a half years. As Spider said, Learn Missoula stands for Listening, Engaging, Action, Reflection Network. And this is what we are called. This collaborative team consists of BIPOC and LGBTQ leaders in the community as well as experts in qualitative research and community engagement. This team will engage in the community in a qualitative research effort that is both participatory and action oriented. This team will also collect information and narratives across our entire community to identify the needs and issues and to get a better understanding of the current state of public safety and systemic racism here in Missoula. It is my honor and all of our honors to have Dr. Laurel C. Warner, who will share the values of qualitative research for our project. Dr. Laurel.
Thank you, Ka'aw. My name is Dr. Laurel C. Warner and I am very excited to be part of this project. I just want to share a little bit about why qualitative research and what is the benefit of using that particular methodology than a quantitative approach. Qualitative methodology offers several opportunities that quantitative does not when approaching this particular topic. Qualitative methodology offers us the opportunity to give our research participants expertise in their experience. It leverages their voices. Brian, you used the term humility and that's what qualitative research epitomizes. It epitomizes intellectual humility. Because as we sit with our participants, we understand that they are the expert and we are coming to them from a not knowing stance, a stance of curiosity, a stance of deeply trusting that they can give voice and narrate their experiences in ways that are multi-layered, multi-dimensional, multi-textured, yet nuanced. It offers the opportunity for us to understand collective experiences at the same time, integrating unique individual voices and experiences. So qualitative methodology really gives us a platform where we can listen to people's subjective experiences that are both honest, authentic, and genuine in ways that qualitative, I'm sorry, quantitative does not. It creates a context where we can come in and say, I want to understand who you are. I want to understand your experiences. And then allow them the freedom to choose their expressions, their words, allow them to choose the structure and the narrative and the descriptions that they will bring to help us to understand in a deeper, more clear way than using a different approach. So those are just some of the benefits of why we are taking a qualitative approach that's both participatory and action oriented. Jamar, I'll pass it on to you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Warner. And to summarize, Project Learn Missoula exists to create a channel that translates Missoula's BIPOC communities and voices and experiences to power. This team, as mentioned before, will collect information and narratives across our entire community to identify the needs and issues as well as to get a better understanding of the current state of public safety and systemic racism in Missoula. This team will work to create a citywide plan for a wide and broad dissemination of the findings, which include a marketing plan to bolster community support. We will work with city, with the city and city council and county communication officers for media relations. And then we will recommend the changes that need to be made by Missoula City Council as the governing body for Missoula to develop and build a more equitable Missoula. And as part of this project, we begin today with the recommendation, the immediate recommendation, that city council adds a position on city council focusing specifically on BIPOC community and community members. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you all very much. I just wanted to make sure any other, I didn't miss anybody from the team, I believe, we heard. Want to give an opportunity to the, our guests, the county commissioners, President Bodnar, Mayor Engen. I know we don't have you for the whole time today. Wanted to give you an opportunity for comment or question. We're going to hold off on council questions until we do public comment. But if any of you would like to take advantage of this opportunity, we have some time for that. And you could indicate by raising your hand in the Zoom window.
Brian, this is Josh and and I think I'm not raising my hand because Zoom has called me Wanita. So we're doubled up. So thank you so much for inviting us and thank you so much to the Learn team for taking this project on. I just, I'm gonna ask a couple of questions. So when you guys are approaching this qualitative research project, what are the central research questions that you're going to be addressing? Thanks.
Thanks, Josh. And I think the way we had set up, Alena and Brad Hall, would you guys, one of you, to like to respond?
Thank you. Due to the nature of the question, I would like to defer to Dr. Laurel C. Warner.
The, the central research aim and goal of the project is to really gain a in-depth understanding of BIPOC experiences here in Missoula. The questions are going to be open-ended and we will have prompts. We are working on refining what those questions are, but they will be really about inviting people to give voice to their own particular lived experiences here in Missoula as it relates to marginalization, as it relates to disenfranchisement, as it relates to oppression, as it relates to their sense of public safety, as it relates to the degree to which their experience, a sense of inclusiveness and a sense of equity. So those will be the the primary themes that we will be inviting people to share their experiences around.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Strohmeyer?
Yeah, thanks, President von Losberg. I will actually be here for, I think, the majority of this meeting. So not much to add at this point, other than thank you for including the county commissioners in this. I think it's pretty clear that the borders of Missoula are permeable and the issues that we're discussing here see no geographic boundaries between city and and county. So glad to be a part of this discussion and this is important work for our community.
Thank you. Mayor Engen?
We can't.
I think you're muted.
Think you're muted, mayor. I usually make more sense when I'm muted, so that actually worked pretty well. I just wanted to thank everyone for taking the time. I am humbled by the the talent and commitment around this table today. And the notion of humility is significant to me. What what I know as a function of doing this job for the better part of 14 years is there's a lot I don't know. I learn something every day and I intend to learn through this process. And that that learning, I hope, will inform, will inform good decisions that that make our community better and safe for everyone. We, we talked about that pretty relentlessly in our plans and in our policies. But until folks feel it, until that is the lived experience of all Missoulians, we likely have not done our job. So thank you. We intend to continue our work collaboratively with the Missoula City Council as we always do. We may take some initiatives and efforts as the executive branch in consultation with with the city council. But our intention is to move forward and collaborate with all of you to get a result, which is what we all hope for. So thank you again. Thank you, Mayor Engen.
Hey, Brian, this is, this is Seth. I don't have, for some reason, I don't have the functionality showing up on my.
I was gonna ask if you wanted to comment.
Well, I do. I've been trying to raise my hand, you know, in the, in the window. But but for some reason, I'm unable to through Zoom. So yeah, I just wanted to say, make a couple of points. And and first, thank you, President von Losberg, Mayor Engen, counselors, Spider and team. You know, I think this is obviously such an important issue and obviously something that we've been talking a lot about at U of M for quite some time. We have a lot of work to do at U of M, actually, a lot of work to do. And I appreciate my colleagues here on the call. I see Alena and Ka'aw and I, I believe Brad is on as a, as an attendee, not as a, as a panelist. So, you know, I just, I really appreciate your, their participation in this. I, obviously, we have, as I mentioned, a lot that that we need to do at the University of Montana. We've taken some steps. We've, we've got to do a lot more. And and I really appreciate what we've been able to, to talk about even over the past few weeks. As we think about the broader community, though, I do think there is not just an opportunity, but frankly, an obligation for the university. And many of you know the, the famous quote from Nelson Mandela that that said, "Education is the most powerful weapon with which you can use to change the world." And and I think, as I think about the University of Montana, we think about the, the structural and systemic racism in our community, in all communities. It's a long-term effort that we have to push hard on. We have to recognize that that is a massive undertaking that we have to commit ourselves to. And I believe a critical, and I'll, I'll use the term axis of rotation in that change process is the University of Montana. And and so I am very committed to this process as well as the things that we're working on within the walls of U of M. But but as many of you know, our students' experience is not limited to the east side of Arthur Avenue. And and frankly, our community is enriched by the diversity that this university brings to this community and the, the ways in which we can enhance diversity and and equity and inclusion at this university will benefit the entire, the entire community. You know, I, I think, you know, Jamar, I really appreciated the language that you used to saying the work of the Learn Group is really, in some ways, to translate BIPOC voices into power and action. I really appreciated that, that phrasing. And I want to, you know, acknowledge the point also that that was made. Alex, you, you made the important point that the people on this, in this group, right, are people of, largely people of color, who carry the weight, not just of the, the lived experience that each of you have around discrimination and racism. But you have been asked over and over to help address and to help solve problems that that you didn't create. And I just really want to thank you from, you know, bottom of my heart for your, your, your willingness to jump in and then commit yourselves to this, to help translate those voices into power or to power and into action. And I really appreciate that, that sentiment. And I'm looking forward to, to learning from this group. And I also want to acknowledge the, the importance really for all of us in positions where we have the opportunity and obligation to drive systemic change to, to, to self-educate. In fact, I shared with the cabinet here at the University of Montana. I invited every member of our cabinet. Some of you might be aware that we have various faculty members this summer teaching courses on, on racism and, and various issues around diversity and equity and inclusion. And I actually invited every member of my, of my cabinet to, to enroll in a course being offered by Professor Toba Millersher later this summer called "Dismantling Racism: From Theory to Practice." It's a three-week course, but, but I believe it's important for all of us to self-educate on this as well. And I want to know, I want you to know that, that we at the university are, are committed to being partners in this. We're also committed to our obligation to learn ourselves, to take action as well. And and we, I can share with this group and others on this call, the, the registration info for that, for that course. But it does run July 27th through, through August 14th. And again, it's actually targeted for people in, in leadership positions in ways they can understand systemic racism and and steps that we can't take. So I'm very much looking forward to the course. And and more broadly, the, the efforts that that we're talking about this morning. So thank you again. I, I really appreciate this session and and the efforts of this group.
Thank you, President Bodnar. I, a couple of quick things and then I want to get to, to public comment. First off, Alex, I wanted to acknowledge what you said about compensation. And I'm very attuned to that. I want folks to know that council, I, on behalf of council, I, you know, started this conversation with Spider and the team. And I did ask Spider to invoice council for the work on preparing this presentation, this proposal. And I want to be clear that this is a proposal and it's gonna, it's a lot of work and skilled time of people behind it. And we're gonna work, those are gonna be the next steps in terms of our response to how we support this. But I did want to acknowledge that that was, I'm trying to recognize the value of the work that you've done even in preparing this proposal and, and the compensation for that. And I also wanted to acknowledge the, the immediate ask around the, the position with council liaison or however we should describe it. And I will, I'm committed to working with my colleagues to acting on that quickly. I just wanted to acknowledge those first two points. Thank you again to the commissioners, mayor, President Bodnar. Please feel, if you can stay for the entire time, you're welcome to. If you have to leave, we understand. With that, I'm going to move to public comment. And Alex, I want to thank you for your help facilitating this. This is appreciative of U of M hosting this for us. And as we had indicated, we had asked people to queue up in the Q and A. And I'm making sure I, ah, here we go. So I believe, and I apologize if I have to get familiar with the system a bit. But the, the first person I'm seeing is Catherine Downey. So Alex, can you commit, can you bring Catherine into the meeting?
It looks like he unmuted me.
Okay. Hello, Catherine.
Hi there. So thank you so much for convening this team. I'm really looking forward to seeing what people have to say, especially people who haven't been able to have their voices heard very regularly in our communities. I have a kind of two-part question. The first is, what is the timeframe for this research to be completed? And then since I'm hearing an emphasis on action, which I also think is extremely important and appreciated, I'm wondering if any funding is going to be set aside in the upcoming budget for implementation of recommendations that come out of this really important work?
Thank you, Catherine. I'm, I'll take the second part of that first. And that's what I was attempting to speak to at the end there. We've got a proposal from this team. It's going to, to take money to do. It absolutely should be a critical consideration in our budget process. I also have indicated, you know, this is bigger than the council. It's why I'm grateful for the participation of the commissioners here and the university and administration. And that's what we're going to have to get to work on in terms of. And that's what we're gonna have to get to work on in terms of finding resources. Would a member, Wilena or another member of the team like to address the question about timeframe for the research?
I can, I can address that. We're looking at 12 weeks. We were waiting to see if there's feedback from everybody here. And Josh, if you're still on, I just wanted to say that in terms of questions that we're gonna ask, we're, we're gonna, we're putting together a list of questions, but we're open to input from you guys. So if there's something you want to know about, we can include that in our research process.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, Catherine. The next person I see in is David Wall.
Thank you. I, I'm the county auditor in the county government. And in the, the action portion of the learn team, I was just wondering if both the city and county governments are in the middle of their budget season right now, a very important time of year, where we talk about our priorities for budget and what we should emphasize, what, make sure we should fund more. So, I know this is very early on, but does the learn team, the panelists today, do they have any advice or any, any, any wishes for local government as to budget this coming year? I think in, in 12 weeks, we'll be pretty much decided on what our budget is for FY21. So, anything so far?
Spider, do you want to address that?
We're gonna be putting together some numbers based on the final scope. So we're, we're hoping to hear from all of you today. And then once we put that together, we'll be talking with Brian and team about that.
Yeah. And David, I, I, I want to mention, so we, we haven't talked numbers yet. I was a part of the downtown master plan update effort, public-private, you know, effort around that front. And my vision and that, we'll see if that comes to fruition, is that this is an effort, that, that effort received broad support from a number of agencies, governmental agencies, businesses, individuals, et cetera. I think that there's a parallel here that I'm hopeful around. But that's, that's the, the hard work that is up next. Thanks. I am not seeing anybody else in the queue. Oh, Henry. Hi, Henry. Are you, are you live?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi there. My name is Henry Reich. I am just curious. I thank you, everyone, for, for holding this meeting. I'm very glad to see that it's happening. And I'm curious, more of a procedural question. This meeting wasn't announced with very much lead time, which I think you're seeing right now as indicated by the lack of people who have been able to come and ask public comments. And I'm curious why the meeting was not announced and advertised more thoroughly, given that the previous meeting on this topic had a lot of people who wanted to comment and were not allowed to during that meeting and are not being, not allowed to comment during this meeting by not knowing about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Henry. I'll do the best I can to answer that. We, we did announce the meeting Monday with our committee schedule. In all honesty, we, we moved to having UM help host this meeting for us in this webinar format. And there were several moving parts coming together in parallel. And I appreciate that that's not a satisfying answer. It's an honest answer. And we will strive to do better. The meeting is being recorded. We will post it. I know Mirto will speak to this again. We're very interested in comments from folks. We will have additional meetings going forward. We'll work to do a better job at getting those announced. And not sure if there's anything else I can add to that. Hi, Dina Mensor. Could we, Dina, would you like to make your comment?
Okay. Hi, sorry about that. This is tricky with the unmuting.
You're doing better than me.
No, I don't have a question. Just as, as a Missoula City resident and as a taxpayer, I just want to reinforce the importance of this initiative and thank you for taking it and that it, I think it's critical to be part of our budget and that this effort is well-funded. So, thank you for doing this.
Thanks. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody else in the Q and A. And, but I'll keep an eye on that if we get additional people. I am happy to go back to council members if they have questions or comments.
Brian, there is an attendee with their hand up.
Oh, sorry. Hey. So I see Heather and the mayor. Oh, and, and the attendee I just saw, Laurel. Sorry, Laurel. My apologies.
No, no problem at all. So I think, thank you for holding this meeting. I'm gonna quickly echo what someone else said about the availability and access to these meetings and appreciate you taking that comment and addressing that we can do better and making sure that these are held at a time and announced in a way that everyone, especially the most impacted people, have an opportunity to participate. While we continue to study and hopefully elevate the voices of BIPOC people, I also think it's important in what we can discuss here right now with budget decisions coming up pretty quickly. I found an article that was written around the time that y'all put together a previous budget, and it focused on law enforcement feeling like they were burning out constituents of yours feeling unsafe in their communities because of drug use and needle trash and in increasing in petty crime. And the response was to fund three new police officers. And I'm just wondering if you still think that that's the appropriate response to those issues? And if not, where in this budget could money be shifted to other other programs, other resources that will hopefully reduce the number of calls, the number of people in crisis? Like housing, mental health access? Or by providing trained professionals who it's their main job to respond to health crises and interventions that don't put people in the pipeline for involvement in our criminal legal system.
Thanks, Laurel. I'm gonna go to some of my colleagues here. Heather, you had your hand up. Would you like to comment or respond?
Yeah, I most certainly will. I have a couple of things, but number one, we started using engagemissoula.com as an opportunity to be able to hear more of our constituents' voices around especially land use issues. But it occurs to me, Brian, that maybe there might be a way that we can incorporate this, this topic on that particular website. So, just something to kind of think about there. But in regards to the mental and behavioral health response that we need in our community, I co-led the county's effort on this very particular issue when COVID crisis hit us. And the mobile response units that we had learned through have been very effective in other communities across the country and has really made a difference in those communities. For every dollar that is spent, making sure that we have the trained professionals that are social workers and psychologists arriving on the scene instead of somebody that is in uniform, really tends to de-escalate the situation and the outcomes are considerably better. And when you, and when we spend that dollar, we save five to $7. That's what the model shows across the country. And I highly doubt Missoula is gonna be unique. I think we would actually see the same kind of savings. So Kristin Jordan, who is part of our Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, I believe she's in attendance here today. She's been working really hard behind the scenes to make sure that we can actually have that put in place via some grants as well as some matching dollars, both from the city and from the county. And I think that is really critical to really moving the needle in the right direction. We know people who have both mental and behavioral issues come in all colors. It doesn't matter. And if we can de-escalate by making sure that we have the right people helping people when they need it the most at their absolute worst moment in time, rather than trying to criminalize the behavior, we will have better outcomes. And I, and I speak to that from a very personal perspective. It really can make a difference, and we need to make that happen.
Thanks. Gwen.
Sure, I, I have a question, but I will first try and, and respond. I think it's a, it's a pretty big topic and nothing we're gonna cover in a few minutes here, but just as some highlights, I think, I don't think it's a question of taking from one pot and putting it into another. I think it's doing a better job with all of the different pots. And that's why we focus on things like our affordable housing policy, the mobile crisis unit that Heather was referencing. I think we need to focus more on those and try and implement those more. But also, when we hired the three police officers, that was correlated to the fact that we were having higher social intervention calls, which correlates to the fact that the state legislature cut the DPHHS funding and there were less case managers. And frankly, I would like to see people have case managers and not be in crisis mode and calling 911. I'd like to not ever get to that point. So there's a lot of different threads here to focus on to get people to the right place so that crises aren't happening. And so, as I said, very broad conversation, but, but these are the things to be talking about. I had a question. Can I go ahead with that?
If you don't mind, Gwen, hang on. Let me come back to you. I wanted to see Amber and the mayor add their hands up. Amber, did you want to respond or did you have a question?
I just wanted to make a comment.
Sure.
Do you like me to do that now? I just first wanted to say thank you to everyone on this team. I'm really happy to see this team together. And I'm processed as being out on, I think, Brian, but what I think, you know, every single counselor and I'm sure county commissioners and mayors as well as talking about, you know, that this, this needs to be more than just listening. There needs to be action because listening kind of floats away at some point. Opportunity and obligation, because I do feel that we are at a point, well, it should have happened a really long time ago, but that we have an obligation to do something about this. No, I, I always say kind of that when I have decisions on council, I, I think about policies and I always look at through this climate change lens, because I think that is just a giant thing that everything we, we talk about needs to be looked through. And I think that we also need as council and electeds to be looking through the as well. So I, I think that this will, you know, I know equity is something that we think about, but I also think that racism is a step further than that, that we need to always be looking at lens. I'm, I, I like Alice's suggestion, Alex's suggestion around the, and I know around having a position in liaison accounts. I think that will help us look through that lens and remember issues that we need to be thinking about looking at. And I'd love to, of course, so if he can send that out to council, I think for all of us to do, because I have a lot
Thanks, Amber. And I'll say, you were breaking, breaking up somewhat on my end. I don't know if it's my internet or yours, but just as a heads up. Mayor Engen, did you have your hand up?
I did, and I even remembered to unmute. Thank you, Brian. And so I wanted to do my best to respond a little bit to the question. I, like, like Gwen, I, I think none of what we do here is necessarily mutually exclusive. And over the last decades, really, the, there has been a systematic dismantling of the safety net in our nation. And it starts at the federal level trickle down to the state level. And it's left the local jurisdictions to sort that out. And again, for the last dozen years or so, we have really been trying to cobble together resources and infrastructure to, to address those, the particularly mental and behavioral health challenges, issues of poverty and homelessness and addiction. And those challenges are enormous as well. And they're all part and parcel of the broader question of systemic racism. All of this, all of this goes together, in my opinion. And so one of the things that we are attempting to do through our budget and really through all of our work annually are identify these gaps that are clear and aren't gonna get fixed anywhere else and try to fill them. And some of that is the role of local government and some of that is the role of the community and institutions who are engaged in this work. So for example, I sit on something called the Strategic Alliance for Mental Health. And we've done a gap analysis and we're trying to cobble again through a variety of resources, including local government, ways to fund the gaps in the system, particularly around youth in crisis. The, the, the mobile crisis unit is a step in that direction. One of the things that we've asked police officers to do is not only be law enforcement professionals, but crisis interveners. And we've engaged in crisis intervention training so that those officers are equipped to do jobs that traditionally they haven't done out of necessity. I agree that we have an opportunity here to, to really bifurcate and allow mental health professionals to respond at the right time and the right place to help people and meet people where they are. And I, I think this conversation can lead us further down that path and more quickly. Frankly, there haven't been a whole lot of people paying attention to that. And so it's largely fallen on local government and providers to, to try to, to try to, again, cobble together some solutions. But we're working on that. In addition, I think our Trinity project where I, I am working diligently with staff, our friends at Missoula County Council and others to put together a 24-hour navigation center, a place where folks can go that isn't the emergency room where they don't belong or jail, which is the other place they certainly don't belong, to get the help they need, to get housing and to, to begin their lives anew. So there are a lot of moving parts here. And I think one of our challenges is communicating what we are doing. Because some of that goes missing because it's, it's, it tends to be quiet work and it tends to be a slog. It's really hard work. It's slow. It requires patience. And it's largely underfunded on every level.
Thanks, Mayor. I've got a cue. I just want to acknowledge Jesse, did you want to respond in this? And then Julie Merritt, and I haven't forgotten you, Gwen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a quick question for, for Spider or Wilena, if that's okay. So just, just on the, the criminal justice reform side of things, looking at our policy on police body cams, I think it's, it's a great policy, but I do think there's some various things that we can do to, to maybe improve it a little bit. The, the ACLU put, put together a model policy back in 2018 that I think really, really covers the scope. And I'm, I'm happy to send that to you guys as well. And was also wondering, like, if, if that's something you guys are gonna be looking into as well as maybe potentially restrictions on the chokehold as well as the no-knock warrants at, at the local level, at the extent that we can enforce that and, and any research perhaps that, that can show positive outcomes from, from going forward with those types of policies.
Thanks. Wilena or Brad or anyone from the team would like to respond? Wilena or Brad or anyone from the team would like to respond?
I can jump in. Yes, we'll be looking at all of these issues. So the the main thrust of our project is that instead of coming top down, we're going to come bottom up. And I don't mean to say that everybody's on the bottom. I mean, the bottom is the entire community. So what we need to do is go to people and really get their experiences. And we do this through a narrative approach because stories is what connects us. Stories are what like have us understand things. If I tell you, I feel like, you know, I'm always experiencing homophobia in Missoula, you'll you'll take that one way. But if I say, you know what, every time I walk down Pine Street, somebody yells at me. That's a different experience and that's a different way of you processing my experience. So what you'll do, and I'm not yell that every time I go down Pine Street. Let me be clear about that. But so what we're trying to do is bring those issues. And when we talk to people, we'll be asking them about policing, we'll be asking about chokeholds, we'll get their experiences and then their ideas. And then we'll be identifying what the real problems are. And what our team is really good at is synthesizing that information and saying, you know what? Body cams are not the, this is not, I'm just making this up, but maybe they'll find out that body cams are not the issue. Maybe the issue is something else. So you'll have you, the entire community, as we're focusing on policing, we're focusing on healthcare, we're focusing on housing, all the things that come together to to build that community. So that you'll have an action plan to say, okay, yeah, you know what? This is the problem. And I think body cams is the exact answer that will help that solve that problem. Does that make sense?
Oh, absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Julie. And then I'll get back to Gwen.
I wanted to ask Wilena about how we can better make connections with the Native American community. I'm afraid that there's a divide that is is preventing the native voices from being heard. I wonder if you could just maybe give us some thoughts about that.
Thank you for that question. One of the things I noticed is even just asking it is a step in the right direction. And we do have the All Nations Health Center here in Missoula that serve the Native American community here with Executive Director DeShane Burnett. And we do have a large Native American student population, including faculty and staff at the University of Montana. And I think we can do better. We can always do better. We are connected in different ways, but we can always do better. And even with the impact of one person, if it's you, if it's Mayor Ingeam, President Wagner, anybody doing one thing to make it in a better direction to make that connection, we can do that. And it can be you attending different events with at the All Nations Health Center. We do a lot of community building events. So I think even just being coming to the events and meeting the people is one step. And there's other ways and I'm sorry, I wish I can go into more detail, but I think there's, we can make that happen and it should happen. And everybody, it should go, it's a reciprocal relationship. We want to, we are part of the community as well. And I think that's the part where Spider talks about storytelling. We our stories are different and unique, as are yours, as are any of the BIPOC community. And I think if being relatable is important, because that's how we make change and systematic change. It needs to be from ourselves out to how we raise our children and how we impact those, our other family out as a ripple effect, the impact of one.
I'd like to also just add a couple of things. I'm not native, but I do understand the voices of marginalized individuals and how they are often moved away from the center. I think the question isn't so much how do we engage natives or how do we engage BIPOC? But the question is, how is it that the voices of white residents are centered? So I think the the focus really isn't so much about pulling natives and BIPOC in. The focus needs to be de-centering whiteness as the norm, de-centering whiteness as the majority culture in Missoula. So if we really want to have these authentic, genuine relationships, we need to begin to start with the notion that the historical experience of whiteness as the supreme or the currency, that narrative needs to change. It needs to be we need to begin to think about the fact that we are all on level ground. And right now there is this hierarchy that always leverages the voices of those whose currency is white. And so I think that if we are going to truly begin to dismantle systematic racism, we need to understand that that comes as a direct byproduct of centering whiteness. And I think that's something as a city council, you are going to need to grapple with. How do we get to the place where in our city, we have a sense of equity across the board and that one particular group isn't centered or isn't put in a superior and a higher position than all the others?
Thank you, Dr. Warner. Julie, did you have a follow up or?
No, I just wanted to say thank you to both of you for those answers. That's very helpful.
Yeah. Gwen.
Thank you. And I meant to preface my remarks earlier, but I kind of jumped in to try and answer that question. I wanted to say I'm very grateful for everyone participating in this and I'm grateful to the learn team for you agreeing to be part of this process. I think all of us have had a lot of big issues thrown at us in the last few months. It's kind of a crazy stressful time and this is a hard issue for me, at least to to try and get my hands around. So I feel like it's it's crystallizing a little bit. I'm seeing the structure for how conversation to be constructive is unfolding and I'm very grateful for that. So thank you. My question was a little bit on the methodology for this qualitative approach. And I really appreciated Dr. Warner's comments fleshing that out. And I guess my question is, I feel like it's kind of an extrovert versus introverts. How, what tools will you use to reach out to those people who don't necessarily step up with their stories, step up with their their thoughts on this? Because I guess we see this a lot in city council. We see people who come and give us comment, but there are a lot of quiet people out there who are very perceptive. And if you ask, you get great information from them. And and I'm just curious with all of the all of the different groups that you'll be talking to and and people out there, is there some kind of approach where you will go to them also versus them just coming to you?
Thanks, Spider. I see you nodding your head and that reminds me a lot of the, some conversations we had around the downtown master plan update. Maybe you could take that?
Actually, I I'll take that. That is such a great question, Gwen. And so what what we are proposing is called a multi-chain, multi-process engagement or recruitment. So we are going to begin doing multiple things simultaneously. And that's why we have that aggressive approach of 12 weeks. All things considered, there may be modifications. So the the process would be I am embedded in a network. And so once we get the go ahead, as someone that's embedded in the network whose voice is trusted, I can say to people that I know, hey, the city is going to be doing this, I'm a part of this, would love to be able to have you participate. And we're going to be creating what's called a chain link referral process. So people who know people will let people know that this is happening. And so in a way, when that happens, I am in a explicitly and implicitly saying to people in my network, this is a research that has benefit and that it has quality. And because they trust me, people will engage. So that's one way that we are going to do it. And the other way that we are going to do it is we're going to connect with both formal and informal leaders of various BIPOC groups. And through us talking to them and engaging with them, they will then give implicit and explicit approval to participate. And then people, again, through the chain referral process will know. So we will be covering people that are extroverts, people that are quiet, because someone will know someone else and they will then be saying, this is value. I want your voice to participate. In addition to that, we will be doing a debriefing process for each time we have an interview. And at the end of that debriefing process, we are going to be axing them to talk about what this experience meant to them. What was the value? And we will end up by saying, do you know additional people whose voices could add to the story, whose voices we have not yet connected with? Who will be beneficial for us to hear from? And that's another one. A final word that we are going to use is just regular advertisement. People will come to us that way, that will be self-referral. And when they come to us, we will then also ask, hey, we're so excited that you took the initiative to come. Do you know of other people who would be willing to participate? So it's going to be a pretty multi-layered chain referral processes with multiple social networks interlecting and interconnecting across Missoula. At least that's the plan.
I also just want to add, I don't think we've made it clear, it won't be limited to BIPOC individuals. We want a baseline study. So we'll be talking to people in the police force and in healthcare to see white people also to see like what are you, what do you see? And what do you think? So we can compare.
Great, thank you so much. I just really appreciate that proactive approach to try and and have a broad net because there's a lot of quiet people out there and I think they have important things to say too. So thank you, appreciate.
Absolutely. And often those that are quiet will not, if you put an advertisement out, they're not going to come forward because they don't know any, any one person. But if they if they have relationships with someone who have participated in that study and that person can say, hey, this was a good experience, they truly are empathetic, they truly come to us with curiosity. They're really demonstrating intellectual humility, humility. They are really treating us as if we are the expert of our experience. Just by that research process, word of mouth is going to spread and that will also increase the interest because we will be presenting exactly what we what we say we want. We want to be people who want to listen and we value yourself as your expert of your own experience and of your lived life here in Missoula.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Warner. I've got Heather and then I saw Merita, you raised your hand. So Heather.
Thanks, Brian. I have a very direct question that I would like to ask this team in particular. When you look at those of us here in government who are who are here at the table today, and I know we're just missing a couple today, do you see? Do you see yourself reflected? Do you see people of color reflected in our council? Anybody?
I'll answer that. No, I don't. And I think that goes back to what I said, that while you have the goal of addressing issues of systemic racism, systemic racism will not be addressed until each of you recognize that there is an inherent sense of always centering whiteness. And that when you need to begin to understand this, it's as if you then bring us in to say, hey, we want to understand you and still you're in a position of authority, you're still in a position of power, because then you're then you're pulling us in when you need us. If indeed we are in a position of equity, that doesn't need to happen. There's no need to pull us in because we would already be in. There's there will, there won't be a need to privilege our voices because our voice will be already part of the privileged group. So I appreciate your question because it really speaks to the idea that often people think, okay, we are going to become more educated about racism. That 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 is never the issue. The issue isn't about educating about racism. The issue is coming to an understanding that in a society, whiteness is privileged. And so the fight really is about dismantling whiteness. And when you dismantle whiteness, everything else will will fall into place.
So if I might, Brian, as a follow up, Dr. Warner, will will part of this process help to give us some direction in terms of trying to de-center our whiteness, especially on council? And and possible solutions to that end? I know we're all elected, but it to this, to the positions that we hold. But I wonder if there's maybe something we can do a little bit differently this time around?
I am hoping that through the narratives and the stories and that that speaks to why we are doing the qualitative piece, right? Because BIPOC just historically have an oral history tradition. They they're able to really speak to the heart of issues in their own voices. And the beauty of the qualitative approach that we are using, we're using both a narrative approach that's coupled with a phenomenological analysis. It gives us those voices. It gives us those experiences that we can then create these thematic stories about what it is a people are experiencing uniquely and collectively. But it also gives us opportunities to hear about what it is they feel needs to happen so that their lives can be the full embodied richness that can happen. And so, yes, I think through the stories and through the engagement, you will be getting some very pointed experiences and some very pointed recommendations about how do we go about de-centering whiteness in our community? And rather than thinking about, well, Missoula is white and everybody else will just be an add-on. But to get to the place where Missoula is inclusive of everyone and everyone's voices is privileged in the same way. So that's our hope.
Thank you. Damar, I see Damar and Wilena.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for that question, Heather. I wanted to respond to to that directly and also echo Dr. Well's sentiments around no, we don't see ourselves reflected in in city council. And that goes back to Alex's statement at the beginning, taking a look around this room, this virtual room in this virtual space and being really mindful or reflective of where the power is, where those resources are as well. And that that ties into that, that ties into that narrative of a lack of representation. That's exactly what we're talking about. There's a lack of representation of people of color on our, in our governing bodies across the nation, and Missoula is not exempt from that. And that goes to our immediate recognition. So as we are engaging in this, in this learning process, we are also calling for a position to be implemented at the city council level, at the county commissioner's level that that is that will work to really translate these these stories and experiences into experience of power. Because, you know, for the for the BIPOC folks of us that are that are here, this is just this, why we're here is just another example of the sort of voicelessness and a powerlessness. And what I'm hearing is how can we connect? And that connection can't happen if we're not present.
Thank you, Damar. Merita, I think I saw you and then I know we have a hand up in the attendees.
Thanks. That was an interesting discussion. I wanted to follow up on Gwen's question. We have a small but increasing community of refugees in our community. And I wanted to know, I guess it's a request that you, as you reach out to seek those stories and those voices that you you also include that fresh perspective from someone who's coming with wide open eyes into this country and and garner, you know, get get the experience that they are living in Missoula as new community residents.
Yes, that that is part of the plan. As a matter of fact, I have already interfaced with some of our more recent refugees from the Congo. So that will be some of our more recent refugees from the Congo. So that will be absolutely a part of the process. And I have connected with them and I, um, even before Spider brought me on, I have already heard some stories from them. So um, thank you so much for wanting to make sure that that is an explicit part of the plan. And I am very happy to respond to let you know that indeed it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, in the chat, I see David. Um, Alex, can you unmute David? There you go.
Uh, thank you. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak again. Um, I don't think my, my first question, I don't think I was very clear, and I apologize about that. But first, I'd really like to thank Dr. Warner especially. Um, I think you've been uh, you have made me that great combination of a little uncomfortable and really excited. And you're not, you're not really learning unless you're a little uncomfortable and a little excited. And I, I really like what you've, you've had to say. And uh, and, and also uh, uh, kind of relating to what you said and what to, uh, Jamar had said about uh, be mindful of where the power is, where the resources are in this, in this group. That definitely makes me think uh, as part of, of budget team about the resources or, or money and where do governments put their money? Uh, that's really kind of where the, the rubber meets the road sometimes. And, and I was wondering if uh, the learn team, if you'd be willing, um, if you could just give your uh, opinion about uh, the funding of law enforcement here locally. Do you think it's uh, uh, if, or, and if you know, I know you haven't done the, the, the study yet, where you're, we uh, speaking to many people. But do you have an opinion on your own now about whether we should kind of keep funding the way it is or increase funding in law enforcement or, or even decrease it? Thanks.
I, I'm, I'm going to respond to that. I, I think at this point, when you're doing qualitative research, part of the process is to enter the space from a not-knowing stance. Um, and when you use phenomenological analysis, there is a term that's called bracketing. David, and so part of bracketing suggests that you're going to go into this space without any preconceived ideas. Preconceived um, plans or action thoughts or recommendation. And so while I appreciate your question, and I think it has value, part of what um, the team is going to be doing is not even thinking about those kinds of things. Because when you go in with an already preconceived idea about whether or not we need to have police, then unconsciously, you create a narrative with the individual that you are having a conversation with in very subtle ways about what it is we want the outcome to be. I know the whole idea of ambiguity often is uncomfortable for people. But in this space, in terms of doing qualitative research, living with ambiguity is the very hallmark of our work. We want to re- remain um, in a space of not knowing until we get all of the voices. Until we start looking at the, the, the themes, until we, we start ensuring that everything about our report really is about the voices of people and not our own unconscious wishes or our own conscious desires. Uh, so I think that's kind of where we are approaching it. And so I don't even want to speculate right now about what it is that, that we will learn. I want that process to evolve in a very organic um, and unclouded, unpolluted way. So we don't, we don't have an answer and we don't have an answer because it's intentional not to have an answer. And then I just really wanted to respond to you about the discomfort of learning. I appreciate that because that's what learning is about. If you're, if, if the council isn't uncomfortable with the topic, then it absolutely means that they're not learning. And often, whenever we deal with the issue of racism, people become very comfortable with that topic. Because it's like, oh, there's something that I can do. When we shift the narrative, which is all about qualitative, when we switch, switch the narrative from let's figure out racism to let's de-center whiteness, then that's where the discomfort is. And that's where the discomfort needs to be so that things can change and so that people can grow and develop. So I'm glad I was able to bring that balance between discomfort and excitement. That means I did my job well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Um, I'm not seeing other hands up for any, uh, oh, yeah, sorry. Uh, I'm navigating the Q and A. Uh, Laurel, can we bring Laurel in?
Hi, again. Um, I don't want to take up too much time, especially if there are other folks in the queue because I've already asked a question and you guys gave very thorough, y'all gave very thorough answers, which I appreciate. Um, I want to just touch on the fact that I think the Kahoots model, I'm familiar with it, that the mobile crisis team, um, I believe would be based off of and that um, I'm encouraged to hear that it's based off of that because I do think that uh, the way it's structured does have a sort of decentralized uh, white uh, concepts of personal and public safety in the sense that um, having um, healthcare professionals respond. Um, who more people might feel uh, safe with instead of um, uh, law enforcement officers who more white folks may, so this is a sweeping statement, uh, feel uh, a bit more safer protected by. And, and I'm just wondering if there are other areas um, in the budget that can be built off of that in the sense um, of instead of embedding mental health professionals um, or, you know, equity officers um, within the police budget and within law enforcement. Sort of which would then more legitimize them as serving in those roles. Um, but areas where we can really shift response and shift resources specifically uh, to meet those same needs, uh, but completely detached from law enforcement. Um, and so just wondering if there are any existed, existing initiatives. Um, you know, things you might have heard, you'll be hearing from agency budget proposals um, where you could invest in um, completely separately. Thanks.
Uh, Heather.
Brian, I don't think I have a response I, to that question. I had another question, but if you want to tackle that.
Uh, sure. Mayor Engen, do you want to respond?
Yeah, pardon me. Yeah, and thank you. Um, you, you know, one of the thing, I really appreciate that question. One of the things that, um, that we hope will come from uh, our mobile crisis unit is um, is better understanding uh, where that response lives. Um, I, you know, police have capacity issues as it is. So, so embedding in police is likely not the, not the uh, protocol we're interested in following. And, and so I think that the notion of that separation uh, makes a bunch of sense. So, so we hope that through this, uh, through this mobile crisis grant, we can start to determine what structure and infrastructure and what those relationships look like. And from there, I mean, one of the, one of the discussions we've had internally is that uh, in the event that we don't get this grant for the mobile crisis unit, I think it's important enough that we, we figured out a way to do it without the grant. So keep fingers crossed for the grant, but if not, we'll, we'll march down another path to get there.
Thank you. Um, Heather. Go ahead.
Sure, thanks. Uh, so I appreciate this, this timeline of 12 weeks to kind of do all the work in terms of listening and then creating a, an action plan, if you will. There is a part of me that really likes action sooner than later. And um, and one of those things that that I'm thinking about is just even in Habitat for Humanity, wearing the executive director for. And trying to really change outcomes in a positive direction. So that we really do understand and implement the, a concept of equality. Not just with our partner families, which we actually, one of our partner families this year is the, a Congolese refugee family. Uh, that I'm so delighted to be able to help, but also to expand that into uh, making sure we have people of color that are, are on our volunteers, who can represent on our staff, on our committees and on our boards. And, and what I would, what I'm wondering, Brian, is there a way that we counselors can be in communication other than just in this meeting setting? But maybe have contact with this team so that I can reach out and say, hey, this is what I would like to do with our organization. And hopefully create a domino effect that this just becomes integral to many other organizations and it's, and that we do keep those action pieces going.
Yeah, I, I, I think the short answer to that is yes. And we'll figure that out.
Thank you.
Spider?
Heather, I just want to say, I know that 12 weeks seems like a long time and everybody wants to do anything immediately. But um, and forgive me for speaking on behalf of, of other people, but if we do that, if we just act, we're acting out of our whiteness. And we're not, you know, and it's a good impulse, but really it needs to come from our community. And it takes time because the community doesn't have a voice. We need to bring that voice to you so you know the right way to act.
I appreciate that very much. I will practice my patience.
And I just wanted to follow upon that. A 12 weeks in reality is a very aggressive timeframe. It is super aggressive. Um, it, it will mean that um, interviews will be needing to be done ongoing. Um, we, we will, we also plan to do a recursive process of data analysis and data collection. So 12 weeks may seem long, but in reality, for qualitative research and the type of research that we want to do with not only um, bringing in the voices and the, the stories, but also creating an action plan based on all that. It's, it's, it's going to be intense. So appreciate your willingness to ask about it. And I know it sounds long. But in, in reality, that is the shortest uh, timeframe that I could see us doing. Because not only do we want to do the story, but we might, but remember, we want to make sure that what we are producing has integrity. It has trustworthiness. It, it has fidelity. And we want to do it within the context of fully prescribed research ethics. And so um, I, I appreciate your question and I also appreciate your forbearance. Uh, so we will add patience, forbearance and ambiguity, Brian, to the, the qualities that you identified earlier.
Patient, patience, forbearance and
Ambiguity.
Ambiguity. I, I had written that one down. I was going to share quickly that uh, in public meetings, I keep a pad of paper and, and make notes on things that really resonate with me. And I'm, there are lots of things that are resonating with me and uh, those among them. So thank you. Um, uh, Damar, I saw that you had your hand up and, and Cal as well.
Thank you very much. Um, I've spoken a little bit. Cal, I'll give the floor to you if you'd like.
Thank you, Damar. I just wanted to add um, to Laurel as well as Spider and Heather. Um, because I work on the universe, in the, on the university campus, um, we will see students that are coming in and their life here in Missoula is, you know, during the fall and they take a little break and come back in the spring. So with this timing, um, I would really, um, I'm going to be in the field as well. Um, making sure that we reach our students as well on campus to hear their stories and their voices. And so this will also allow um, myself and the rest of our team as we go out and, and hear their stories um, to be able to have that time as well. I, um, we're coming back a few weeks early um, in mid-August. So that would give um, a great opportunity to get the majority or as much as possible, as many um, stories as possible that I can collect on my end as well, if that helps.
Thank you.
I just wanted to quickly add, um, Heather, but also back to your question, Jesse. We're also happy to meet with each of you. Uh, we don't want to, we want the research to be its own thing, but you're going to have questions that you want answered. And it, and it would be nice for us to be able to frame our work around the things that you're concerned about. So yes, you'll be a huge part of this process.
And Damar, did you want to add as well?
Yes, thank you very much. Um, I wanted to add to that, the fact that as we take this time to, to build and collect these stories and narratives, um, that we also acknowledge that, that this is an ongoing process. And so we want to be able to um, ensure that we are, that while we are acting and, and acting in a sort of, in a really responsive and quick fashion, uh, that, that developed, that, that stories are ongoing. Um, and we want to ensure that while this wave is like really big and all this like time and energy is dedicated towards systemic racism and what are we going to do about it? Um, the, the reality is that, that issues like this tend to come in, in waves as it pertains to, as it pertains to whiteness. And so we want to ensure that, that this is an ongoing process. And so with that, while it is 12 weeks, uh, we also um, are on our end as we're developing this, want to ensure that we're able to continue developing and, and creating this, this channel. We want to make sure that this channel is one uh, that is open and will, and will forever remain open as well. Uh, I guess in short, we want to make sure that, that this is a, that this is a gerend of a process, that we are continuously ING-ing this uh, this work of ensuring that voices and experiences are heard and felt.
Very well said. Um, I think we have time for, there's one more question in the queue and then I'm going to uh, turn it over uh, to my colleague, uh, Mirta. Um, uh, Catherine, could we have Catherine in? Um, you want to ask your question? And then I have a quick comment before, after you ask it.
Yeah, and I will try to keep this quick. This is a question for the research team. Uh, I really appreciate the fact that you're not trying to really forecast what the conclusions of the, the finding, the research will be versus having an open mind going into it. That said, I'm wondering if you have any thoughts, even a ballpark for what so, what sort of funding you're going to be needing to be able to implement research fundings? 12 weeks actually seems really fast, based on my own experience with qualitative, qualitative research. So bravo. And while I know the city won't be the sole funding source, my hope is that there will be at least some money, a significant portion set aside to be able to implement whatever comes out of your, of your findings.
Thanks, Catherine. And, and maybe Spider, I could ask you to speak to that since um, we engaged your firm. And, and I just want to preface that I, this is a question, I think, obviously I've been wrestling with and others as well in parallel as we go through this. And so I want to acknowledge that um, you know, I, I don't want you guys to feel an imperative to respond on that at this point. Um, but you should, let you speak for yourself.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak about it. Um, I, I don't feel comfortable giving a ballpark yet. And this is a new team we're putting together. I'm trying to, um, one thing that's really important to me is, um, I feel like this team, regardless of um, of the issue, this is a qualified and talented team that I, that I would hire for any project. And so as um, people that I'm working with, I'm still getting to know uh, roles and responsibilities and um, uh, wage needs. So I'm still putting that together. And we were hoping today that we'd have a better idea of our scope of work. So I'm sorry, I'm not trying to dodge your question. I just really don't feel comfortable throwing out a number because I like to be precise in what I'm doing. So I will say that um, everybody on this team is a professional and needs to be paid well. And there's a lot of work and it's going to take a lot of our time. So it, it's, it's going to be a, it's going to be a project.
Thanks, Spider. Um, I, I want to thank everybody um, from the bottom of my heart uh, for the participation. Um, thank you to the team. Uh, thank you to my colleagues and other groups. Thank you to the public. Um, again, um, I apologize about the, the notification. Um, as I said before, we can do better about uh, additional opportunities going forward. Um, and I want to turn it over to my colleague, Mirta.
Thanks, Brian. Um, I, again, thank you um, very much to all of you. Um, I honestly think that all of us being here today and thinking about how to make progress in making Missoula a more inclusive community gives me, and I think a lot of people hope, that better times are coming. I would like to know if anyone has any additional thoughts or comments? Do you want to close out with any final thoughts? The team? No? Thank you again. I also want to reiterate what my colleague, Brian von Losberg, said about that this is not the only venue or the only time for our community to express their concerns, opinions, and give us their ideas and feedback. So we have a city website, engagemissoula.com, that will be available as a tool for us to hear from you and for us to communicate with you. But also, our city council email, again, that's council@ci.missoula.mt.us. And you can always leave a voicemail for us, 406-552-6012. I want to thank everyone again. Also, want to thank Alex for facilitating this meeting. Certainly, that made it easier for us to navigate and get well connected with the community. With that,
Mirta, can I interrupt you?
Yes, please.
I apologize. I saw that Jamar did raise his hand. It's, and I want to echo my thanks for Alex. Even with Alex's help, it's extraordinarily difficult to facilitate these. So I just saw that when you asked for a comment that I think Jamar wanted to speak.
Jamar, go ahead.
Yes, thank you all so much. And I just want to make sure that as we're honoring each other's time, I want to make sure that we honor the space and location and then the sacredness of this place that we are that we that we all call home here in Missoula, Montana, valley. So I definitely want to make sure that we take some time to recognize in this weekend, if public, please, that we are.
Thank you. And yes, I echo that. I think that is all for now, but we will be in touch about next steps. Thank you. Thank you all and have a great rest of your day.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.